Call to order and roll call. Chair Goss.
Present.
Vice Chair Blair.
Here.
Commissioner Waters.
Here.
Commissioner Quinn.
Here.
Commissioner Sarkisian.
Here.
Commissioner Swab.
Here.
Commissioner Noble.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated. Welcome to the City of Kingman Meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission on Wednesday, May 15th of 2024. Our first order of business is the approval of the minutes from the special meeting minutes of the Planning and Zoning Commission from April 17th, 2024.
I'll make a motion to accept that.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. All right. Next, we move to the consideration of public comments. Those wishing to address the commission should fill out request forms in advance. Comments from the public will be restricted to items not on the agenda. There will be no comments allowed that advertise for a particular person or group. Comments should be limited to no longer than three minutes. The commission may not respond to speakers during the call to public. The commission may direct the staff to study the matter or request that the matter be placed on a future agenda. Do we have any comments?
No, we do not.
Thank you. All right, now for new business. The first we have is a public hearing conditional use permit case CUP 24-0002. This is a request from Madison Humphries, applicant and Extraordinary Storage LLC property owner for a continual use permit, CUP, to allow for mini-storage warehousing in the commercial service business C-3 Zone. The subject property is 6.75 acres and is located at 4240, 4220, and 4200 North Stockton Hill Road in Kingman, Arizona. Do we have a report from staff?
Yes, Chair, pardon me, Chair Goss and members of the commission. As you stated, this is a public hearing for an application for a conditional use permit. This is to construct seven storage buildings, seven buildings for individual personal storage, and two overhead canopies to allow for the storage of RVs and boats under a shaded cover. This property is located at the southeast corner of Stockton, North Stockton Hill Road and Sierra Vista. There's three parcels that would ultimately be combined into one for this type of a use. And we have our new planner on staff, Amy Patsy, who was at the end of the table here. She'll be the one that's presenting, making the PowerPoint presentation to you and giving you some background on the project. Doesn't look like the applicant is here, but it's just similar to some of the other projects that we've seen in the past, these mini-storage type uses.
Great, thank you so much.
This is on. Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. I'll be presenting conditional use permit case CUP 24-002, sorry, 0002, for mini-storage warehousing at 4200, 4220, and 4240 North Stockton Hill Road. Applicant Madison Humphries was applying on behalf of property owner Extraordinary Storage LLC. They're requesting approval of a conditional use permit to allow mini-storage warehousing on property zone C3, commercial service business. The subject property is located on the southeast corner of Sierra Vista Avenue and Stockton Hill Road. Sorry, I'm really nervous. The general plan designation for the subject property and the properties to the north, south, and west is community commercial. The properties to the east fall within Mojave County's jurisdiction and have the general plan designation of low-density residential. The property is zoned C3 as well as those to the north, south, and west. Properties to the east are zoned within Mojave County as agricultural residential. The surrounding uses consist of vacant land, single-family residences, and a number of commercial businesses, including a pet feed and supply store to the north, an auto dealership to the south, a church to the east, and a tire store and motorcycle repair shop to the west. Utilities and physical characteristics are as follows. Drainage flows from the northwest corner to the southeast corner on the subject property. There is an eight-inch sewer line within the right-of-way of Stockton Hill Road and eight-inch water lines in the three adjacent right-of-ways, Stockton Hill Road, Sierra Vista Avenue, and Sierra Road. Here are some photos of the site. This one is looking southwest from Sierra Road. Also looking southwest, further south on the site, from Sierra Road. This is looking northwest from Sierra Road. And looking south from Sierra Vista Avenue. Citizen review process and public notification was conducted. The applicant conducted two neighborhood meetings on 31524 and 31624. Surrounding property owners within 300 feet were notified by mail of both meetings, and the site was posted. There were no attendees at either meeting. Notice of public hearing was sent by mail to surrounding property owners within 300 feet of the site. The site was posted with a public notice sign and published in the Kingman Daily Miner all on May 1st of 2024, and no comments from the public were received at the time my slideshow was made. But a letter of opposition was received yesterday, and that was included in the staff report. Comments were received from the following internal and external reviewing agencies. The fire department stated that additional comments would be generated once building plans and permit were submitted for review. The project would be subject to all applicable codes as adopted by the City of Kingman. The city building official and development services manager had no comment. Frontier Communications stated there were existing telephone facilities on these properties, and relocation or abandonment would be at the owner's expense. The engineering department provided site plan markups that were attached to the staff report. A conceptual analysis of the site plan was done, and it indicated that the total gross floor area of new buildings would be 125,889 square feet for mini-storage and 1,800 square feet for office. The storage units would be accessed primarily from an access point on Sierra Vista Avenue with a secondary access point on the unimproved road Sierra Drive. Paved internal driveways will be provided between the units. Parallel parking spaces will be provided internally adjacent to new storage units. Additional parking will be provided next to the office, including ADA-compliant spaces. Office parking will not be within the gated area of the site. Stormwater detention will need to be provided above ground or below and will likely be in the southeast corner of the property. If CUP is approved, a formal review of the site plan will take place to ensure the project complies with all the adopted codes, regulations, and possible conditions adopted by the Planning and Zoning Commission. This is the conceptual site plan that was submitted by the applicant. And through the analysis, it appeared that they were meeting the substantial amount of the requirements. Bulk regulations of the C3 Zone appear to be met. Buildings along Sierra Road will have no setback requirement unless the commission imposes a requirement or considers the project to be adjacent to the residential zone to the east, which would then require a setback distance of 10 feet. The street width provides a buffer area. Minimum parking requirements for the new building will be reviewed during the site plan process. It appears the proposal would meet the requirement, but further review is needed. The site appears to be generally adequate for the mini-warehouse land use, and there's no specific open space requirements. There's no known noise, light, visual, or other pollutants that should arise from this use. And architectural standards, as stated in Section 4-20.030, are applicable to walls and portions of the walls that are oriented towards adjacent streets, public right-of-ways, including area limitations on the use of metal as an exterior building material. Additional findings were as follows. The area equal to a minimum of 10% of the development's net site area will need to be landscaped in accordance with the zoning code. A landscape plan will need to be submitted with the site plan. Public utilities can be accommodated. The engineering department identified that a fire hydrant will be required in the Sierra Road right-of-way near the proposed driveway between lots 3 and 4 that should be utilized for sewer service. Sinage and outdoor lighting will need to meet the minimum requirements of the zoning code. This includes fully shielded wall pack lights. Fixtures within 50 feet of a residential zone or a public right-of-way need to have an internal or external shield. Staff further recommends a condition that no direct light source shall be visible from the subject property to the residentially-zoned properties to the east. No additional development or dedications of right-of-way for Stockton Hill Road are anticipated to be needed at this time. However, any required dedications and/or development of Sierra Road will need to be negotiated with Mojave County. Staff has provided the application material to the county, but has received no comment thus far. There are no known historic, prehistoric, or natural resources on the property. Planning staff recommends that the planning commission approve the conditional use permit to allow mini-storage warehousing at 4200, 4220, and 4240 North Stockton Hill Road by affirming the findings as stated in the zoning code Section 2-40.040E and by attaching the following conditions. Maximum allowable size of the storage units shall be 1,000 square feet in accordance with zoning code Section 3-90.210B. Provide a stormwater basin to offset any increase in impervious areas in compliance with the City of Kingman Design and Administrative Manual. Any modifications to the existing city-maintained sidewalk and landscaping shall be reviewed by the city. Access to the site and operational hours shall be limited from 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. all days of the week. All buildings visible from the public right-of-way shall be designed in accordance with zoning code Section 4-20.030, General Site Planning and Architectural Design Standards. Including but not limited to facades consisting of approved materials, metal, glass, plastic, and highly reflective materials may not be used on more than 25% of the area of walls visible from the public right-of-way on the exterior of the building. The building must include architectural offsets and incorporate details to provide interest and vibrancy. Large, blank, featureless building facades or roofs are not allowed. Provide a landscape plan with the site plan review that is in accordance with the standards in zoning code Section 4-90, landscaping, with a minimum landscape area that is equal to 10% of the net site area. The minimum setback requirement for all building structures and signs is 15 feet from the property line along Stockton Hill Road. In accordance with zoning code 4-80.070G1, internal driveways will need to be improved with a durable dustless surface of asphalt, concrete, or similar surfacing. In accordance with IFC 2018, Section 503 in Appendix D, internal driveways must be a minimum of 20 feet wide, and where a fire hydrant is located, it must be a minimum of 26 feet wide. Provide an off-site fire hydrant to meet IFC 2018, Section C103, Table C102.1, that is served by an eight-inch public water main and a 20-foot-wide water line easement dedicated to the city. A fire hydrant will be required in Sierra Road placed near the proposed driveway. In addition to the outdoor lighting requirements of the zoning code Section 4-70, outdoor lighting, no direct light source shall be visible from subject property to the residential neighborhood south and west of the site. The existing driveway access to Stockton Hill Road is not compliant with ADA standards. The driveway shall be retrofitted by the applicant to meet ADA standards if used. The City of Phoenix has an ADA retrofit detail that is acceptable to the city. In the previous condition that I read, it stated that the residential neighborhood was to the south and west of the site, but that's inaccurate. The neighborhood is to the east of the subject site. Condition 14 would be the three parcels will need to be combined, at which time a new address may be assigned. A traffic trip generation report in accordance with the City of Kingman's Street and Sidewalk Development Rules and Regulations shall be prepared to determine whether a traffic impact analysis will be required. The applicant shall obtain all applicable permits from Mojave County for all proposed or required work in North Sierra Road and possibly East Sierra Vista Avenue. Half-street improvements, including street curb and pavement, will be required on East Sierra Vista Avenue as acceptable per City of Kingman Engineering Department. Site visibility at all intersections and driveways shall be maintained. Any proposed building, walls, fences, landscaping, or other obstructions shall comply with site visibility requirements. Parking must comply with zoning code 4-80.070K2A, which states that parking in the exterior side is permitted when the parking space is a minimum of 20 feet from the exterior side property line and the parking space is located behind the front of the building. A drainage study shall be completed to analyze onsite and offsite stormwater flows affecting this project. A grading and drainage plan shall be prepared to show how the site will be graded and how all stormwater flows will be handled. A stormwater storage basin will be required. The project shall be designed to limit discharge to historic levels and flows. Leaving the site shall be released at the historic location and in the historic manner so as not to create issues for downstream properties. Per City of Kingman Engineering Department, the sewer will need to be extended along North Sierra Road and East Sierra Vista Avenue to a stubout approximately 1,600 feet to the south. Per Frontier Communications, relocation or abandonment of the existing telephone facilities on the subject property will be at the owner's expense, and all design and construction for the project shall be done in accordance with all applicable federal, state, and local laws, codes, ordinances, rules, and regulations. This includes all water, sewer, street, drainage, and fire code regulations.
You have any questions? Does anyone have questions for staff?
I just have a comment. Amy, if you could go back to, I think it's 3B. I've brought this up in the past. The parking calculations, since the new code was implemented, the parking calculations are just atrocious for storage facilities. I'd like staff to take a look at that at some point because 133 parking spaces for this facility is just excessive. If you do the traffic counts, it's probably going to be less than 20 cars per hour for the peak. So, and, you know, I've designed a couple of these and trying to fit parking spaces when they're not going to be used. It's just kind of pointless.
Agreed. And noted. Thank you.
If I may, Commissioner Noble, I think one of the things that we're going to take into consideration, we'll look closely at those provisions in the zoning code on the parking standards for this type of a use. However, I believe that we're allowing for one parking space in front of each unit, each of the storage units, so that would include, those would be included in the total count of the total number of parking spaces.
Yeah, I understand that, but it's the work and effort of the designer that goes into trying to make it at work. It's really time-consuming.
Yeah, and I think-
Considering that there will never be 133 cars in that facility.
I tend to agree with what you're saying, and I think staff is having a real challenge in how to interpret and apply some of these new provisions in the zoning code that's only been in effect for three years. But we have situations like this that have come up, and it does raise some of those questions, and staff will be evaluating that.
Yeah, okay.
So, thank you for pointing that out. On the water line easement? Yeah, there was, there was a- What is it that you wanted me to bring up? Just let me know. On the water line easement? Oh, on parking? Oh, Rosa had something add on the parking.
Hello. So, on that topic, we do hope that that changes in the future. However, we did evaluate this site for compliance with the code, and we currently allow for off-street parking. 18 linear feet can be used. And so, considering the perimeter of the site with that requirement, they still comply with the parking requirement.
I have a question. I believe it's clear from the elevations here or the plans that there's not going to be access from Sierra, right? The road in the back.
Oh, I think there's going to be a secondary access point off of Sierra.
Is there Sierra? No, is Sierra-
No, no. Sierra is the road on the east side.
The back.
Sierra Vista is the one on the north side where the feed store is located.
Yeah.
So, are you asking about the-
Sierra, yeah, because it's, I don't know if it's paved at that point.
No, it's unimproved.
It's not paved, right.
There's no access.
And that's, I think she indicated in her report that there would be, that the applicant would be required to provide at least half-street parking, whatever the normal is on their side of the development, on their side of the roadway, they would have to improve.
Okay.
Any further questions? No? Thank you very much. Thank you. All right, I'm going to open it up for public comment next. I will just register that we have received the comment from Craig Knuff, and we have all read that. But if we have any more comments, you can approach the microphone.
And Chair Goss, I think it's appropriate to just go ahead and open this up as a public hearing. That's what this is, that's what this item is. Open it up for a public hearing, and the applicant and/or the public can speak to the matter.
Perfect. Do we have the applicant here? Yeah, okay, come on up.
Todd Brody, I'm in Saltberg Associates. I'm the architect there. Sorry for coming in a little late. It was a little traffic getting out. Just to echo on your point, yeah, for storage facilities, and we're doing a ton of these and have a soon just the numbers for 133. So, I get the comment on that you can use it in front of it, but, yeah, just, other than that, I think everything else is more or less standard. Good stuff.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions, sir?
Does anyone have any questions for the applicant? Will he's here? No? Okay, thank you. Any more comments? All right, I see none. Oh, except for Rosa.
The PowerPoint mentioned a 20-foot easement. That should be 25.
It was a clerical error. We'll make sure we correct that if the project gets approval. We'll make those corrections in the final order.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'm going to close public comment and open it up for commission discussion. Anybody have any comments?
I'd just like to make an observation. Just piggybacking off Commissioner Noble, he spoke about the low number of vehicles that'll be ever visiting the site simultaneously. Every time we have one of these come up before us, and there's a lot, the argument is, you know, it has a real low impact on our infrastructure. Maybe like logically, that's pointing to a problem in that we have all this infrastructure investment, especially Stockton Hill Road, and we're tying up all this space with something that doesn't really utilize it, you know? I mean, I know Covert's Country Corner, Stockton Hill Feed right on the corner there. I've been going there my whole life. It's, that's a good site for a business. This is a corner lot on two, you know, decently trafficked streets. You know, there's this concept of highest and best use evaluation. Like, maybe this could be better used as something that employs more people or serves the community, or it's a place where people can meet, you know? So, I don't know. We've all kind of hashed over allowing these developments. We've seen a lot, like, rubber stamp them. Maybe there's some arguments that we're missing for why we're approving all these things that's tying up some pretty prime real estate for maybe some other developments in the city. So, I'd like to point out. Thank you.
I concur with Gary. I think there's more objective use for those properties out there than having all these stor- excuse me, having all these storage units on Stockton Hill Road. I mean, we've had three that have not gone through. And we had the one right on the corner of Gordon in Stockton Hill that built a two-story thing, you know? So, I think there's better utilization for the properties.
I'll steelman that, the argument. Valid points, but, you know, I was born in Kingman, in that neighborhood, right? The land's been vacant other than a mobile home dealership, and I think it was Enterprise after that. That, that, that community is saturated, right? There's not a bunch of empty lots. It's not going to grow, right? So, to fill it in with something that land's been vacant for so long, to just have some sort of business go in there, if somebody, if somebody was going to invest a lot of money into it for a retail store or a restaurant or a gas station, I, I, I don't, I think it would have happened already, is my point. I think there's other locations in Kingman that are probably more profitable. So, that's just me steelmanning your guys' argument.
All right, I'll make one comment. I'll go with all of you. Here's my two cents. I would, I would love lots of things to come to Kingman, but unfortunately, we can't make them. And we also can't just not develop properties because we would like something else to be there. I can think of a lot of things I would like to come to Kingman, but so far, they don't. So, I would have a hard time saying no when we don't have any other options of things to go. If they were saying this or this, I would definitely pick something else, but, well, I mean, unless it was something way worse. But, but yeah, so I feel like we don't have a lot of say in what businesses come into town, and I'd have a hard time just saying flat-out no, just because I don't particularly want to use it.
Chair Goss, yeah, I hear what you're saying. I just think the more we approve these things, the more likely that'll be the low-hanging fruit for developers to basically try this first. I mean, there's basically little risk in these developments. You set up storage as long as you're insured, and you don't make it flammable or whatever. I mean, you're pretty much good to go. Whereas, you know, starting up a business like a gas station that was mentioned, it takes a lot more effort. You know, your cap rate's different. It's harder to get value out of that if you're doing an income property. So, I don't know. I just, this has been nagging me for a while that we have a lot of debates on these properties, but this particular type, we seem to never look closely at. It seems to just be my impression, at least so long as I've been on the board or commission. So, anyway, I agree with the city that this does meet a lot of the criteria, but I'd just like to rest, maybe be a little more thoughtful going forward because we're getting a lot of these requests. We're set in precedence. Thank you.
Didn't we have a CUP for this site recently, like, within the last year?
We've had, this site, as my understanding, it's been up for sale for quite some time. There's three separate lots. We've had some, a number of inquiries on folks that were interested in purchasing the property. Most of the time, I think, and the staff could correct me if I'm mistaken, or in the time that I've been here, it seems like the use that is- or since in the time that I've been here, it seems like the use that has been proposed has consistently been this self-storage type of use on, on that particular part of, of the city, on this particular site. Like I say, it's, it's really what, what the, the market is demanding. You know, staff doesn't go around encouraging one type of business model or another, or one type of use or another. It's whatever the code allows, whatever's consistent with the general plan. In this particular case, this application was made for a conditional use permit. This is our opportunity to be able to place conditions on it that we believe are appropriate, which is why I think we've listed those out. However, the use is consistent with our code, with the approval of a, of a conditional use permit, and it's consistent with what the general plan states.
Chair Goss, if I might just add that the general plan, having just gone through, approved the 2024 general plan, it's, it's nebulous. There's, you know, you want to promote community, you know, infill, which certainly speaks to what Commissioner Quinn is, is applying for, but there's also other considerations, like, you know, maybe, maybe having more employment, you know, drawing more employees in, into Kingman, and therefore more people living here. So, there, there's various ways to look at it. I see a lot of these projects rubber stamped with the approval of the general plan, but frankly, you can read it a million different ways from my perspective. And that's just, that's just my two cents.
Excuse me, I think the owner's rep wants to speak. Come on up.
Sorry.
Sorry, yeah, there, there was a previous CUP that was approved for it, and this is, this was adding another parcel onto it, because there was a third parcel that was part of the whole thing. So, there was a previous CUP that was already approved, so.
And, and that be the case of, any previously approved use permit that would have been on this property, if it's superseded by this new application, that would, would just go away?
And I'll just, I'll just add that the lot right across the street is empty, right on the corner. I mean, the street doesn't cross, but there's empty lots there. There's still empty lots on Northern and Stockton Hill. There's empty lots all the way down that street, right? So, there's plenty of room for development in that area for commercial properties, and there is none for residential, right? Those are filled in. So, let's add that.
Any more comments? No? Okay. Do we have a motion? One through twenty-three.
Yeah, one through twenty-three, yeah, yeah, yeah. I'll move to approve the conditional use permit, CUP 24-0002, with all twenty-three conditions.
Second.
Yeah, she closed it after she did the- You got a motion and a second.
A second.
Second, okay. You've got a motion and a second. Can we get a roll call vote? Chair Goss? Approve. Vice Chair Blair?
Nay.
Commissioner Waters?
No.
Commissioner Quinn?
Approved.
Commissioner Sarkisian?
Approve.
Commissioner Swapp?
Approve.
Commissioner Noble?
Yes.
Motion approved. Thank you. Alright, we are going to move to our second new business item, which is public hearing for a conditional use permit, case CUP 24-0003. This is a request from applicant Jacob Van Cleve of Van Cleve Investment Group LLC, an engineering firm, Mojave Engineering Associates Incorporated, for a conditional use permit, CUP, to allow for a mini-storage warehousing facility within a commercial service business, C-3 zone, on approximately 0.65 acres, located north of Airway Ave and east of Pinel Street. The subject property is further described as lots 26 through 37, and a portion of Lot 25, Block 21 of Banks Airport Edition, Section 6, T21NR16W, under Mojave County's Tax Assessors Parcel Number 320-08-026A. Do we have a report from staff?
Yes, Chair Goss and members of the commission, this is another condition, uh, application for a conditional use permit that will require a public hearing. As you said, CUP 24-0003. It's a request from the applicant Ja- Jacob Van Cleve of Van, Van Cleve Investment Group. This is another similar type of storage facility, albeit on a much smaller scale. This will have seventeen units on, on the site that's at the north, northeast corner of Airway Boulevard and, and Pinel Street. The staff has reviewed this, looked at it, and, and created conditions for, for the commission's consideration. Rosa will give a brief presentation on the, on the project, and the applicant is here to be able to speak to it as well when you open the public hearing.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, this, like Mike was saying, is a similar use. I'll try not to repeat some of the things that have already been repeated because of the similarities, but if you have any questions, feel free to stop me. So, as Mike said, the applicant is Jacob Van Cleve. Cleve, the property owner, is Jacob, Jacob Van Cleve Investments, and this is to allow a conditional use permit for mini-storage warehousing on a C3 property. This property is located at the northeast corner of Airway and Pinel Street. You can see here, this is the subject site. It's the land, projected land use has this categorized as community commercial. C3 for the zoning. The surrounding uses, there is RV sales and liquidation to the west of the property, and we have townhomes to the east. And there's a pub plumbing company farther east, and a truck terminal across the street, as well as vacant property and auto repair. There is existing water lines on Pinel Street and Airway Avenue. There is a sewer line along Airway. This is site photos. Looking northeast, you can see the plumbing business there from afar. Looking north from the corner of Pinel and Airway Street. Looking south, you can see there's Airway at the far end there. The applicant conducted two neighborhood meetings on 429 and 430. Surrounding property owners were notified. There were two attendees at the first meeting and none at the second meeting. It was noticed two property owners within 300 feet of the site on 51, as well as posted on the same date, and it was published in the newspaper on the same day. No public comments have been received regarding this project as of today. The, most departments did not have any objection or comments. The fire department noted, once building plans are submitted, they would provide further comments to ensure applicability with the, the codes. The conceptual site plan of this site will, is, for the proposed site, they are proposing seventeen individual mini-storage units with 11,900 square feet of area. There will be two driveways off of Pinel Street, and paved internal driveways will be provided to the units. The engineering has requested that the, that there be improvements off of Pinel Street if the CUP is approved. There will be parallel parking spaces provided internally adjacent to the new storage units. If the CUP is approved, the site plan review process will take place to ensure that this project complies with adopted codes and regulations and conditions by the PNC Commission. There will be a screen wall that will be required on the north side to screen the site from the adjacent residential zone. This is the conceptual si- site plan here. You can see to the east, they have a proposed retention basin, and there to the west is Airway Avenue. It, the conditional use is consistent with the zoning code, granting the conditional use. In granting the conditional use, there appears to be no significant impact. The hours of operation will be 6:00 to 10:00 p.m., which would hopefully limit the impact to the residentially zoned properties to the east. Storage of hazardous materials is prohibited. There will be a drainage study conducted, as well as drainage and grading plans submitted to the city, and it will need to adhere to the city's design administrative manual. They will also need to provide a trip generation report to confirm whether there will be a impact on traffic. Bulk regulations of the C3 appear to be met. While the buildings on, along, while the buildings don't have a specific setback in the C3 zone at zero, there could be a ten-foot setback distance if it's included in this conditional use permit for the residentially developed properties to the east. That actually is a commercial site. However, you can see there, 001B is a commercial site. However, there's multifamily development on there. So, there's no setbacks unless this conditional use permit would condition a ten-foot setback adjacent to those homes there, to those townhomes. There will be approximately twelve parking spaces required for the proposal. The developer will be allowed to use eighteen linear feet of off-street parking area to meet this, so depending on the width of the parcel, most of this can be mostly met, but we would have to review that at the site plan stage. There's no known noise, light, visual, or other pollutants that would arise. Architectural design standards would need to be applied to the portions of the wall that are oriented towards public right-of-way. So, that would include the limitation that the use of metal would be limited to 25% of the building. The development requirements would have the developer provide a minimum of 10% of the area be landscaped. If there would be an additional fire hydrant required, that would be evaluated at the site plan stage. For this conditional use permit, staff recommends approval with the following conditions. We have the maximum size of the storage unit, of each individual storage unit, a thousand square feet. As I mentioned earlier, stormwater basin will be required. Improvements off of Pinel will require a sidewalk. The access hour shall be limited from 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. All buildings visible from the public right-of-way should meet the architectural design standards. Internal driveways will need to be improved with dust the surface. Drive aisles will need to meet the International Fire Code at 26 feet. If outdoor lighting is required, it should be mindful to any residential sites around it. The trip generation report will be required. Site visibility at intersections shall be maintained. This might not be such an issue. It looks like they've already dedicated a tamper to the, to the city, so this not, may not be as applicable. Drainage study will be submitted. This sewer extension will be required from Airway to, along the street frontage on Pinel Street. Again, the street improvements will be required on Pinel in accordance with Kingman Street and Sidewalk Development Rules and Regulations. And designing construction shall be done in accordance with applicable federal, state, and local laws, ordinances. That includes all water, sewer, street drainage, and fire code regulations. And the last condition there is an eight-foot, a high block wall or solid fencing is required along the north property line, where they have that adjacent residential zoning. Is there any questions?
Any questions for Rosa?
Yeah, Chair Goss. Sorry, to the left, I believe you already answered this. Those tightly packed mobile units, that's all part of the RV sales office, Trotters RV or whatever, right? Oh, sorry, on the map, if you're looking at page sixteen of sixteen. There's a-
Oh, yeah, let me go back to that one.
Trotters RV, okay.
Yes. The RV sales and liquidation, so it's correct.
Right. And there's no, it looks like there's no improved residences anywhere near this.
So, there is townhomes there on Swing Street to the east. However, there's own commercial, which allows for that multifamily complex there. To the north, we have, let's see if I can pull that up. We have residential zoning. That's where the eight-foot block wall will be required as a buffer.
Okay. And the, the residents of that apartment complex, were they notified? Or the owner of the property, was he notified?
Those residents would have been included in that 300-foot peri- um, border around, around the, the subject site, so they would have been notified.
Thank you.
Right, it, it would have been the owner, however, the site was posted with the zoning notice of the public hearing today.
Right. That's all, yeah.
Okay.
Any more questions? Okay, thank you.
Chair Goss, when you open the public hearing, I believe the applicant is here and may want to speak on the matter as well.
Great, thank you. I'll open it up now to the public hearing. Does the applicant want to come up and say anything?
I'll introduce myself. I know some of you guys. Hi Keith. Noble, how's it going? If you guys have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer for you. No?
Any questions? Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
And do we have any comments from the public? Alright, I see none. I'll open it up then for commission discussion.
Chair Goss, if you would go ahead and close the public hearing now, since you didn't have any other public comment.
Sure. I will close the public hearing and open it up for commission discussion.
Thank you.
Alright, go ahead, I know you want to say it again.
I just always have to say something. I'm just curious if any community anywhere has ever experienced these storage facilities, like, on a downtrend where they're no longer in demand, you know? Has there been, have any of you heard of studies of that?
So, I think this one's different. This is for RVs, this isn't a standard.
More specialized. Well, that may actually speak to my question a little more. There's a downtrend that's just affecting RVs for some way? I don't know, like, we're loading up a lot of these, boat storage, just general purpose storage. I'm not totally averse to this development, it looks like in a pretty safe spot, but again, like, what if we flood our community with these things and suddenly it turns south? And I'm not aware of that ever happening in another community. I'm just thinking of reasons why maybe we don't want to include these things everywhere in Kingman. That's just my two cents, Chair Goss. Thank you.
Maybe you could turn them into tiny homes.
Exactly. Small businesses.
Alright, do we have any more comments, or do we want to make a motion?
Yep, there he goes.
I'll move to approve conditional use permit, case number CUP 24-0003, with all staff recommend- recommendations.
Second.
Alright, you've got a motion and a second. Can I get a roll call vote? Chair Goss? Approve. Vice Chair Blair?
No.
Commissioner Waters?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Approve.
Commissioner Sarkisian?
Approve.
Commissioner Swapp?
Yes.
Commissioner Noble?
Yes.
Approve, motion is approved. Thank you. Alright, the last thing we have is announcement by commission members- Thank you. All right, the last thing we have is announcement by commission members. This is limited to announcements, availability, or attendance at conference and seminars, requests for agenda items for future meetings, and requests for report from staff. No discussion on any of these items. Um, I just want to bring up one thing. Um, a few of us have been talking about, um, our meeting time. I know it was moved to Wednesday. Um, if we could perhaps reopen the potential of moving it back to Tuesday, I know that would help a lot of people, so maybe we could have a conversation about that, as well as, um, the commission needs more time to review the agendas. Um, so if we could, I know a while ago, we used to get them a week before the meeting, um, and that just allowed us more time to visit the sites and things like that, depending on it. Um, so if we could get the agendas a little bit further from the meetings, um, that would be very helpful for us as well.
Chair Goss, I echo your thoughts. I, I wish we would have been able to get you this information long before just the, the, the end of the day yesterday, and that's what staff will strive to do, is to try to get it to you. Um, I, I'd like to have you have it in your hands at least five days, three to five days before the day of the meeting, that we have plenty of time to be able to, to review the information and to ask questions if you need to. So, we, we, staff will strive to be able to do that. Um, as far as the meeting date, I, I don't recall how it got changed. I think that was happening right before I got here, right on the second day that I got here.
Okay, uh, so it got changed because, um, the council wanted access to this chambers on Tuesdays. Um, I don't know if they actually use it. Um, it's, it's kind of been difficult for a lot of us to switch like this. Um, also, um, if we could have maybe just a little bit more communication, um, because I know we approved the second Wednesday of every month to be our meeting, and it's the third Wednesday, and it's just things get jumbled around and we don't get, we don't get notified.
Commissioner Noble asked that same question about why this was held on the third Wednesday, and that was a, a, actually an oversight, oversight on staff's part, because the first fell out on a, on a Wednesday this, um, this month, and the, the council met the following week and the first Tuesday of the month. Typically, we're used to meeting on the second, the, the week after the council, which is what happened in this case. It just so happened to be the third, uh, third Wednesday of the month rather than the second, like we normally would meet. So we would have back-to-back meetings of city council and then planning, planning a zoning commission, which didn't occur that way. Um, but we'll, we'll do our best to try to correct that so it doesn't happen again in the future. However, if the meeting dates are going to change, I think that's something that is going to have to be presented to the city council for them to be able to take consideration and action on that.
The, uh, council, we had workshops going on, and they tried to do those on Tuesdays, since we already have meetings on Tuesday. So I believe that's why we cleared the, the schedule. Um, we're, we apologize for the inconvenience, but if a, a different day would be better for you guys, I mean, the council, I'm sure would entertain it. Um, but like this month, it, it did sneak past that our meetings are on the, the first and third, and somehow you guys did have a, should have had a meeting, and it got overlooked, and we apologize.
Is there, is there a preference for the commission to meet on a day other than Wednesday? Or, or do you want to go back to Tu, Tu, and it sounds like the preference would be the.
Is the council using the room on the Tuesdays?
Not every Tuesday, but like today, we should have been using it because we used it, well, we used it yesterday and we had it scheduled for today.
Right.
So they, they try to put any, um, workshops or special meetings for us on Tuesday, and if it runs past five, we're competing with you guys. So, um, the city manager at the time felt it was best that we just take Tuesday off the schedule.
And we concurred, well, when this happened, that we concurred to move it to the second Wednesdays.
Yeah, that is a choice we made.
But we were only offered Wednesdays.
I understand that.
We were only offered Wednesdays.
We, yeah, we were, we were kicked out of Tuesdays and we were given Wednesdays, but, um, um, but yeah, it just, if there was a little more communication, that would just be helpful in general because, um, yeah, I'm not free every Wednesday of the whole month.
Me neither.
Well, dur, during the time that I'm going to be here is the, I'm, I'm the interim director, um, but by all means, feel free to give me a call. If you don't have my number, I can certainly give it to you, but call, you can call, any of you can call me directly at any time.
Well, I sent an email, uh, last, or at the beginning of the month, because I hadn't heard anything about the meeting on Wednesday, and I never got an email back, so. Uh, I, I, I think a few of us had, did ask, like, what's going on?
Well, I know the city's having trouble because, you know, Unika sent out an email.
Yeah.
And I responded to her, but she, and she said to several of us.
I responded to, and she.
And she didn't get them, so some things between.
We were, we were having some difficulty, IT was having some difficulties with, with emails that were getting somehow lost, lost in the, the digital world somewhere.
So does the second Wednesday work then?
I'd like to keep it that way.
If, if Tuesdays are not available, is the second Wednesday the best option?
It avoids my son's, uh, Boy Scout, so yeah. I say yes.
I have softball.
I miss Tuesdays too.
And I know Sarkisian, you, you have a meeting that you want to go to on Wednesday, but, um.
Yeah, this has been an inconvenience for me.
I will ask the city manager if we can revisit this and get you guys back to, you, you want the third Tuesday?
No, second Tuesday.
Second Tuesday.
Second Tuesday.
I will ask.
Thank you.
Chair Goss, while we're, while we're all talking about this, is there any chance we could have this moved to five fifteen? I know staff kind of sits here for a little while, and the onus is on, they want to actually be able to start right at five rather than wait for us, but, you know, I run from work to get here, you know, because I get off at five technically. I always, you know, skip out a little early, and maybe we'll have some more people get interested in serving on the board if it's, you know, outside of business hours, or a little past. I don't know if, uh, you guys would be interested in that, but it'd help me out a little bit.
There again, we can ask the city manager, and, and I, I have no objection to, to moving it, the, the start time to, and, and an extra fifteen minutes if necessary, to give you an opportunity to be able to get here, especially if you all, you know, some of you have your regular day jobs, you have to, to finish the, the end of your workday to be able to get here on, on time. You know, we can, we can certainly make that request and change that if necessary.
I would appreciate it.
When we're finished talking about this, I would love to talk a little bit about when we receive the, um, packet for the week, but I don't want to end this conversation if other people have things they want to say.
I think we're good. Go ahead.
We done?
I don't see a problem with throwing to five fifteen.
I don't either.
Yeah.
I'm supportive of that.
Would I give you more time, Gary?
Yeah.
That would be perfect. Yeah, just fifteen minutes is all I need.
All right, we can, well, they can bring that up maybe when they ask about Tuesday.
Um, going back to receiving the packet, when we, when we receive it a week ahead of time, it gives, it gives us enough time to be able to explore it. Even five days, I think we could manage, but three days, I'm concerned, if those three days are really busy, that there won't be enough time to really give it the attention that it deserves.
I will commit to having, um, the, the agenda packages to you the week before. The meetings are going to be on Wednesday. We'll have them the week, the Wednesday before, of, of the week before the meeting, uh, and, but no later than that Friday, so that you have, at least you have to, have them before the weekend, and then the three days before the meeting. So I will, we'll commit to that.
That sounds great. Thank you.
All right, does anybody else have any more items? No?
No.
All right, then I move, we adjourn.